High efficiency front load or a top load. You know, there's certain things that can be done, you know, in order to to adjust that. It's not a one size fits all. You can't say two people should pump every 30 days and eight people should pump every 30 days. My three kids and myself, when we had our holding tank in our other house, also national year, we were going every 10 days. So, I mean, it depends on your water usage, you know, but for the most part, I mean, there is an average we can use, you know, based on the number of occupants in the house.
It was, um, this situation was a kind of a serious deal in the last couple of years. You know, it's definitely not a target until now. So, um, I'm surprised I haven't seen the increase of the pressure.
One other thing too, I don't know if you've been following with COVID, they're finding, you know, COVID cells are being shed into human waste also. So you have a holding tank that's piped out, you're also emitting, you know, whatever illnesses potentially that that person has or that family has also. So it's more than just one issue here that you're dealing with, but.
So let me ask you, you said that there'd be no incentive to delay because we would find them whatever they would have paid had they been paying on time. But they could still delay this and say, well, I don't have the money now, I'll do it later. But you still then have staff time into catching them and stuff. So if we're really going to encourage them, one, they should pay the actual cost that they should as part of the fine. But it seems like we'd have to have something above that so that they have an incentive to do it on schedule.
So the other citation we have for noncompliance, so we give them a seven degree straight on the first citation. If we catch them a second time, the citation doubles, we can write a new citation every day. So after the first offense, we go out there a second time and the tank's got a some pump in it or it's running over or the alcohol pipe went back in it again. We can write a new citation every day. So, you know, there would be a thousand dollars, you know, potentially each day of that violation coming then back to the county. That'd be one option. Or you look at some sort of fee that goes along with it, a department fee. Like I mentioned before, I've got an odd line issue with the trailer court in Marengo. It requires daily attention. They have to send their reports to me every day because they've had so many issues. So every day I'm reviewing the reports where, you know, working through issues that they flooded the mound out during the winter, so we made them shut it down. So we're out there checking to make sure that they're pumping, checking the condition of the mound, requiring improvements to their system so they have less infiltration. So there's a lot of time that goes into that particular property, you know, in this case, but.
So a question for the committee, do you think we're going to get to language that we would be ready to approve today as far as this? Or are we more likely to give the zoning administrator direction on bringing several options in writing related to changing this?
I agree.
Looking for options?
Looking for some kind of options. I know that the city of Ashland, I don't know how many millions of gallons in the Lake's pure, that ain't good.
Yeah.
This is Supervisor Jennings. I'm wondering how we rate compared to other counties in our area as far as strictness and as far as the fines are concerned, you know, are we on the low end? Are we higher than other, are we about average?
So, for example, Bayfield County uses a different approach. So when a person, a holding tank becomes 90 days past due, they send out, they mail out a notice. Then another 30 days goes by, they mail in a second notice. Then it goes to corp counsel, corp counsel sends out a letter of demand, and then they go to court. So their approach costs a lot of money that we don't have. We would probably have a neighborhood of between 20 and 30,000 dollars a year in corp counsel fees if we took their approach. By going to the citation route, if we have to write a citation, the district attorney prosecutes, so we aren't involving corp counsel at all. Downstate, there's a number of counties, even in the central part of the state, that took the citation route just because it's cheaper for the county to involve the district attorney rather than corp counsel.
What about as far as amounts, what about as far as amounts are concerned?
Amounts are similar. There are a couple of counties, Marathon County is one of them, I can think of off the top of my head, and Vernon County also. Their rates, they're simply charging court costs. So there's, you know, minimal incentive then, so the department's going backwards, whatever they're involved in enforcement.
Thank you.
Yes.
Supervisor Weiner?
I got upset in holding tank and I get pumped out from the guy and he just goes down a half a mile and pours it on the field. Can you tell me how bad that is?
That's approved by the DNR, NR 135 regulates the land disposal. So when he pumps your tank, he's supposed to check the pH of the of the waste. They add hydrated land to the load. It's got to sit for 30 minutes in the truck and the pH has to be about 12 before they can land apply it. The fields that they land apply are all approved by the DNR based on seasonal saturations, high water, tables, perch water, things like that. So we don't regulate land disposal, we're not allowed to, that's regulated by the DNR.
Basically, it's through a private owner who wants it on their field.
Right, most haulers won't dump on a, like if I, if they came and pumped your tank, they typically won't dump on the field because they're required to sit there. And if the truck's not full, you know, time is money. So if they don't have a full one when they get to your house, they're not going to want to dump on your field. Well, you can't combing the waste. I couldn't come to your house with a with a half load, pump your tank and then dump it on your field, that's illegal unless your field's approved by the DNR. So that stops a lot of that, but.
Would you be prepared today to offer an ordinance that we could vote on? Or is that something that you would prefer to draft if the committee directs you to draft an update of this?
Well, we could do it one of two ways, I could either draft something and bring it forward, or we could just take the route of, you know, a secondary citation, any amount of what what they've saved basically for pumping. I mean, I can work on the wording here and bring it back here while we're still.
Is anyone ready to make a motion on this in terms of direction?
We gotta send this to the full county board.
The, if we're going to change and add a second citation, I guess that would be the full county board.
One possible motion could be to.
Make a motion to re-pass it.
At directing the zoning administrator to provide an update to the ordinance for citation and frequency amounts related to the porta systems. So we have a motion by Supervisor Meca, a second by Supervisor Weiner. Any further discussion?
We have a motion out. Do you have a question?
We have a motion by Supervisor Meca, a second by Supervisor Weiner, to direct the zoning administrator to provide a recommendation to update the ordinance on the porta systems, the citation amounts and frequency. And Supervisor Meca, for clarity, do you want this brought back to this committee for consideration before going to the board, or do you want it to go directly to the board?
Yeah.
Directly to the board?
Yeah.
Okay. So this will go to the board then. Any further discussion? Ready to vote then? All in favor? Aye, opposed? We have four yeses and we have a no from Supervisor Corporal. Okay. Thank you. Next agenda item, permits issued and revenue account. And that is going to be our zoning administrator?
You see in your packets where we ended up here for, through March, we had liability income of $3,275. Our transfers into permits issued is $11,425. And then you can see on the subsequent pages in the packets that we had, we had a lot of, we had a high revenue come in, you know, for the month of $11,425, but we had a lot of after the fact shoreline grading fees from metal.
Any questions? Ready to move on then? Next, 11 other business, is there any other business? Hearing none, we'll go to the land description portion of the agenda. Number 12, public comments, are there any publics related to, public comments related to land description? Are there any comments related to land description for the public comment period of the agenda? Anybody on Zoom, either on the phone or the computer, that would like to make a public comment on the land description portion of the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move to item 13, discussion and possible action on the sale of parcel one, I'm sorry, parcel 01600040-0300 to the town of Marengo.
Okay, so I believe it was in our February meeting, we had a discussion about this subject property. It was formerly owned by Mary Anderson in the town of Marengo. Way back in September of 2020, the town of Marengo had approached me to ask the committee, the town of Marengo was interested in purchasing this property if we were to foreclose on it. So the committee instructed me to to talk with the town. So I did, so I talked with the chairman, Steve Wallston, a little bit on a purchase price for the property. And so I offered him basically what was the delinquent taxes, purchase it for the back taxes, which is about a hundred dollars. And that was what we had agreed upon. So I'm just bringing it forward to the committee. If the committee would like to accept that, then we would move to the full county board to sell this property to the town of Marengo.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that.
Motion by Supervisor Corporal, is there a second? Second by Supervisor Weiner, discussion? Ready to vote, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we'll go to item 13, discussion, I'm sorry, discussion and action on land sale results. Turn this over to our property lister.
Okay, so our land sale just concluded and I'm going to pass out a little packet. I didn't get it in with the the minutes because the land sale ended before the minutes went out, so. So basically what this little packet is that I just handed out is the results of the land sale that we had on Wisconsin surplus over the past month. So we sold every single property that we had with the exception of one, which was the Glidden gas station. But we kind of broke it down here of what, which property, you know, listed all the properties, the high bid amounts, total expenses, and then what our profit or loss was on the property. And then on the last page, you can see the total, basically profit that we made on the land sale. This is just kind of FYI, but I would seek a motion to basically accept all of the high bids received during the land sale.
We have a motion by Supervisor Corporal to accept all of the bids at the land sale. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion by Supervisor Corporal to accept the bids on all of the bids on the land sale? Hearing none, that motion dies, not that we can't come back and revisit it. Go ahead Supervisor Weiner. Go ahead.
I've been working on the quick market moving for quite a while and the last result was that it really didn't go to the DNR, took all the tanks. And so I've been working with the DNR at Madison to, because if it goes to Ashland County, they cannot no longer charge you for removal of the tanks to DNR. So when I finally got a hold of DNR to take care of that business, it takes two to three weeks for it to file at Madison. And so when I called, tried to get that bottomed off, it laps over the options there. And another thing, a little issue on that, that's not the biggest issue, the bigger issue on that is that there's still some little bit of contamination, just a little bit, but it's scaring everybody away from receiving that part. So I got no work to do on that place and, well, we can lay on, on, I've been working hard on it. Now I got the DNR hard balls that's going to come over and get me straight in the right direction to where all these companies take place. And so that might be able to go on for that. I'm sure that all this will go on the next one. So what do you do when that sale, so when your plant sale is done with, can you start up another sale on that same thing, or have you got a waiting list on that?
Yeah, so with Wisconsin surplus, what we can do is we can relist the gas station property right away if the committee so chooses. And we can go ahead and we can adjust the price lower if need be. And yeah, I was also in contact with Adrian from the DNR, he said he spoke to you. And he confirmed with his corp counsel that the 20,000 lien for the tank removal is no longer, doesn't apply to the property because it was taken via tax deed. So that'll be an important thing to note on the property that I think it might attract more interest now that that extra 20 grand is not attached to the property. It would, I mean, if we're, I guess if we're talking about it now, it would be my recommendation to relist the property immediately since it didn't sell.
And also, would we put in the description on there how to get inside of it? I mean, this is kind of a unique property.
Yeah, so there are pictures of the inside of the building on the listing.
But but somebody who's going to bid on this is going to want to inspect it.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, we can put on there, I guess, I guess we can list that we'll do showings and I'll go down and do showings for the property. I'll probably ask that Chairman Weiner, Supervisor Weiner, come with to the showings, if that's acceptable. Just on a personal level, I don't, I don't really want to go meet some stranger down in Glidden by myself, so.
And I'd be happy.
Yeah, or, yeah.
We'd be happy to meet with you also. Yeah, yeah, I agree, we would want somebody to go with you.
Yeah.
But I think we should offer that because I would not buy a building that I never got to got to inspect. So, but I I think the first thing for the committee is to accept the high bids, you know, so we can transfer the the properties.
Yeah, yeah, I I agree with Clark. I think our first, we can discuss the Glidden gas station a little bit more in other business, you know, what our plans for that is. But for now, I would just seek a motion to accept all these high bids so that we can proceed with deeding these properties to the people who who won the bids.
Do we have a motion?
I made the motion.
A motion to sell all of the parcels for their high bid? Is there a second? Supervisor Weiner, so we have a motion by Supervisor Corporal, a second by Supervisor Weiner to sell all of the parcels for the high bid discussion? I'll just comment that I know the city of Ashland on these small odd parcels, in many cases when the city had them, it was very hard to find a buyer and at times even hard to give it to somebody because people didn't want to pay the taxes on it. And if there was utilities in the right of way, people said, well, why should I buy it? Nobody can build there anyway. So I'm actually pleasantly surprised that you have bids on some of these small odd parcels. So just as background, even though some of these are at a loss, they can actually be hard just to give away in some cases, so. Any other discussion on this? Ready to vote then? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we'll go to discussion of property subject to tax title.
All right, so, yeah, so we're referring to the tax deed notice served list in your packet. As usual, we just have listed the the payments that have been made over the past month and then current outstanding balances on a lot of these. Parcels of note for today that I am interested in seeing if the committee would want to foreclose on. One of which being on the second page, highlighted in yellow, is the property owned by Eugene and Jody Stevens. If you recall, during our last meeting, I had mentioned, I had given, this Jody had called me right before the meeting and I gave her a one month extension to pay the 2017, the balance on the 2017 taxes. She, in the middle of April, she did make a $1,500 payment, but after several phone calls last week reminding her that she still had $500 left, she failed to make the remainder payment by the meeting this morning. So that would be one property that I would ask the committee to consider foreclosure on. The other one is on page three, right at the bottom, Patricia Castern. We've really had no contact from her, we did manage to get service on her, but we've had no contact from her in regards to wanting to pay taxes or making a payment plan. We consulted with the city, the utilities are disconnected, so even though there's a house there, there, we're pretty sure that there is no occupants. And so that is it. So those are the two properties, the Jody, Eugene and Jody Stevens and the Patricia Castern property that I would recommend that we proceed with foreclosure on.
Do we have a motion?
Also.
We have a motion by Supervisor Corporal, a second by Supervisor Meca, discussion? Ready to vote, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Anything else on this topic? From our property lister? Okay, so then we'll move to other business and on that, we'll talk about the Mellon gas station, so would like to speak to that first?
I'll let John, if John, if you want to speak on it, you can, otherwise I can.
So we can discuss the Mellon gas station on other business, what, where would you like to go with that? So the discussion earlier from Supervisor Weiner, let me ask you, do you want to make a motion in terms of direction for the committee on this? To what? You want to relist it, is that correct? So we have a motion by Supervisor Weiner to relist the Mellon gas station, is there a second? And we have a second by Supervisor Corporal, discussion?
So for discussion? I, I don't have it handy here on this list what we listed at for this last land sale. I believe we listed it at $22,000 for the minimum bid. My recommendation, seeing that the total taxes and expenses are 19,900 on our end, maybe try to list it at 20,000 for the minimum bid. And then also, you know, include the information that the the lien for the removal of gas tanks is extinguished by the tax deed, so that would not be the responsibility of the buyer. But there is still a small amount of contamination on the property. And then we would also make the change to offer to show the property if someone wants to come up and take a look at it.
So if I may, Supervisor Weiner, could we have your motion be that the county relist the Mellon gas station for 20,000 as a minimum bid? And Supervisor Corporal, would you accept that? And if there's no objections, we can amend it with the 20,000? Are there any objections to amending it with a minimum price of 20,000? Hearing none, then that's the motion? Any other discussion on this? I'm sorry, the Glidden gas station. Thank you.
No, I have nothing else on this.
Okay. So the motion is to, for the county to relist the Glidden gas station with a minimum bid of 20,000. Ready to vote then? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And then the next meeting date, I asked before the meeting and for staff, because sometimes staff leave at this point, it's, it's, as a practice, it's probably best to set the next meeting date while our staff is here because if somebody leaves, then their schedule isn't in front of us. So suggestions for next meeting date?
What would be the turnaround on the land auction for the gas station? That's a, is that a 20 day process or is that a?
We can kind of set it, we can set it however long we want. We can basically, you know, tell them what start date we want and what end date we want, so. My initial thought is to let it go another month, at least, you know? So. I mean, I guess it doesn't really matter to me what the next committee meeting date is as long as it's a month out because I can set the end date for the auction to coincide with that.
Our zoning administrator, do you have an idea for a next meeting date, what works on your end?
I'm indifferent on my end. You need to be looking at, to make the schedule work, you know, like the 31st of May is a Monday or, you know, first or second is realistically.
When's Memorial Day, is that the 31st?
Memorial Day is the 31st.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 31st.
So June 1st would be a Tuesday?
Sounds good, my birthday. Is there anything on that calendar that I can reference? Nope, there was, but it's crossed off.
So the suggestion is Tuesday, May 1st at 9 o'clock, does that work for everybody?
Tuesday, June 1st.
Pardon?
June 1st.
Tuesday, June 1st?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we'll go with Tuesday, June 1st at 9:00 AM for the next meeting?
Works for me.
Okay, thank you. Going next to the land records portion of the agenda, number 17, land information, 2020 financial reports.
Hi, this is Brittany, can you guys hear me?
There you are, yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So historically, you guys had liked to see the land records finalized report, so that's what I'm presenting here today. This was my first budgeting around for land records. And the over expenditures are all covered by transfers from the land records nonlapsing fund. So it does appear that we've gone over budget, but that was just a mistake on my end, not knowing that I had to put into the budget that how much I would be transferring. So this was known, but I, it just was a fail on my part not knowing how budget cycles and budgeting works. So next budget will be, spending should be equal to expenses, I'm sorry, expenses should be equal to revenue. It was just an issue on my part not knowing. So in case anybody noticed that large over expenditure, that was all covered by funds from our nonlapsing land records. So we have a, this is a situation because this is grant funded, so none of this money is actually levy dollars. Do you guys have any questions on this report? The very last sheet shows our revenues and that kind of, towards the bottom of the page shows what our grants are kind of being put towards. All right, hearing the discussion.
Any questions or comments? Supervisor Weiner is asking, when you get revenue, where does that money, what does it go into?
The revenue goes into the land records, the nonlapsing fund, so it is a, an account just for land records money, sits in that pot until we, until I pull it out to use it. So it gets pulled into either the land records cash fund where I can spend things on salaries or software purchases, that kind of thing. Otherwise, it, we have a, we have that cash fund. Otherwise it, we have a, we have that cash fund where we have a savings account, so.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item, which is other business. Is there any other business?
This year is the update for the land and information plan. Three-year annual update. So I'll be working on that. That just has to get approved by the land information council by January thirty-first. So then it'll probably come to you guys to be forwarded to county board just to put it on file. So that'll be in the future.
Okay, thank you. Anything else under other business?
That is all.
One more motion, a motion to adjourn? Motion by Supervisor Corporal, a second by Supervisor Meca, all in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you. You can end the recording then.